It is 5 o'clock, and thank you all for coming out tonight, this afternoon, to our special council meeting. I'll let the record show that Mayor Pro Tem Cobb, she is on Zoom. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Boyd.
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Councilmember Adams.
A second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Mayor Pro Tem, is that a yes or a no? She said yes? Okay, thank you.
It is a yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. We will now start off with our citizen comments. You have four minutes to speak and counsel. If you would like, you have one minute allotted. The first person is Michael Forino. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Citizen comments, you're considering taking that away from us. Why? For non-agenda items. Well, nothing that... Here we go again. Everybody's looking around, shuffling papers. It's exactly what I'm talking about, and you get upset every time I bring it up. Madam Mayor, you don't even have the common courtesy. You'd want it and you demand it, and you don't give it. So, you want to take away our right to speak about non-agenda items because we can't get anything on the agenda. You don't listen to us. You've outright stated in the paper that you're in cahoots with, and before you say the paper has nothing to do with it, I've got 45 minutes of audio of the mayor in KDH's office, in the editor's office, colluding...
Mr. Forino.
This is my time, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forino.
This is on the agenda, and why you want to take away my right to speak?
It is citizen comments. Stay focused, please.
The gentleman behind me seems to have some rude remarks. Where was his warning? Why is he not removed? Okay, I keep telling you, I'm ugly. I'm not stupid. Right? You want to take away my right to speak about non-agenda items because we bring up the uncomfortable things. You say you represent us, but we can't get our items on the agenda. You won't meet with us in person. How many times have I stood right here and said, "We can go in that little conference room over there. We can have an honest, intellectual, adult back and forth." You refuse to do it. The paper, in support of the mayor, has taken down the ability to comment on their articles. And don't tell me that that's not by design. You take down the mayor's official Facebook page, destruction of public records, so we can't get to you that way. You don't answer emails, but as Mayor Pro Tem, who's not here, said, "You all stand together. One of you does something, you all stand together." Okay? Prior to Christmas, okay, you want to take away my right to speak because I sent audio to all of you, and every organization that most of you belong to. Okay? We're at the 25-40 mark of that 45 minutes. Mayor, non-sequitur, for no reason whatsoever, starts making racist comments, how she has a whole racial tier system as to who she wants to deal with based on skin color.
Mr. Forino, how does that...
That's why you want to take away my right.
Mr. Forino, how does that have to do with the agenda, non-agenda item?
Because that's why you want to take away my right to speak.
Please stick to the non-agenda item.
I am, just like when we were talking about the budget, how somehow the city manager's salary was not on the budget. Madam Mayor, if you can't follow along and string ideas together, I don't have time to tutor you, and you can't afford me. I guarantee you that.
Point of order. If I'm not mistaken, we're not supposed to be humiliating or criticizing or attacking fellow councilmembers.
Mr. Forino, please stay on that item.
This is the agenda. This is exactly why the agenda. This is why you don't want us speaking. You interrupt, okay, that 45 minutes of audio, you kept interrupting the person who was trying to counter against you in that meeting you were having.
Mr. Forino, the removal of non-agenda comments, that is what's on agenda to be discussed.
And that's why you want to do it. You want to prevent us from having our First Amendment rights, period. You're trying to silence opposition. You take away our ability to reach you, to comment to you, yet you're open. You're transparent. You're accountable. In the mood I'm in right now, I can't muster laughter. I'm sorry. What's going on in the back of the room, Madam Mayor? You keep asking me for respect. You ask us for respect. And here we have it. I hope the TV cameras are catching this one, because for once, the camera's not only on me. Time after time after time. You won't sit down with us. You will not meet with us. You ignore us, and then you expect us to act like you just took a dump on our hats and we're supposed to say it fits better? I don't think so. You don't like what I have to say? I don't care. I have the right to say it. So does everybody else who gets up here. They have that right, whether I agree with them or disagree with them. That is a God-given right. For all of you holy rollers in this room who want to cling to religion, our rights come from God, not from you. So knock it off. Don't play with the Constitution. By the end of this year, I guarantee you, this city is going to be sued by the federal government, the state, and its citizens. That's going to be your legacy.
Councilmember Boyd.
Madam Mayor, to our citizens, I do not want you to get the impression that each and every one of your council members are not interested or will not respond to you. That I do not believe is the case. I have citizens that reach out to me through Facebook, text message, email. Some even mail me letters, and I will respond to them. Most of the time it's within 72 hours, so I can't say that that's the case for every council member up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Anyone else would like to speak, council? All right, let me just make it clear that the item that we're discussing on the special agenda is removal of non-agenda comments. Mr. Sean Price, good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
City Council, Mayor, and those in this room, and my fellow Americans. Today I come up, and I want to speak on an agenda item that I didn't put on there. Y'all did. My city council put this on there to take away my right as an American to speak. I've come up here on several occasions, and I've asked for etiquette. I've asked for respect. I've asked for consideration. I've asked for thoughtful debate, and I've gotten racism. I've gotten hate. I've gotten threats. I've gotten surveillance of my home. All because I oppose certain things. Stop spending money. My country is $91 trillion in debt. Stop spending money. So that's my statement. But then I come up here and I don't have the ability to speak about it. You want to take away anybody's voice because it makes you uncomfortable, because we don't agree with you, Madam Mayor, because you disrespect by not even acknowledging somebody sitting up here, talking to you? You want to play with everything else up there. That's why I wish there was a split screen up here. I wish there was a split screen up here, so that way anybody online can see you and how you disrespect those that are up here when we were speaking on these items. They're right here. I've heard that audio myself.
Mr. Price, if it's not about...
And it's pissed me off, because it's me not being able to sit here and speak on RS 24001. Okay?
Mr. Price, if it's not on the non-consent agenda...
I am speaking to RS...
Well, stick to it.
24001, am I not? So if I'm speaking to this right here, okay, then I'm on the agenda item. Get it?
Yes.
The collusion that you have with the newspaper, as well as the communist actions that you are prevailing here in this and these agenda items...
That is not a non-consent agenda item. That was never on the agenda, and that's not up for discussion.
This discussion item right here, DS 2401, is not what we're talking about?
No, sir. It's the non-consent agenda item. This is a special meeting.
Okay. Sure. Right? Well, it still doesn't change my opinion that my city council's racist.
Thank you. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes. Please do not be talking in the order...
Where's the respect?
Mr. Sean Price, please do not do that again.
So your city employee gets to sit there and disrespect me, right?
Mr. Price, you are disrupting the meeting. Please do not do that again. Melissa Brown? Good afternoon. You have four minutes. Councilmember Boyd. Thank you.
I don't need to tell anybody what I'm talking about, because there's only one item on the agenda. I'm going to ask for everyone to bear with me and understand how this actually applies to non-agenda items being removed. So some people who I'm looking at want to talk about accusations with no evidence. Council wants to remove citizens' abilities to bring forward their concerns. A concern and an accusation could be considered the same thing, the same way criticism is considered an attack from some people who sit on this dais. Some people on this dais throw insults at citizens, telling them they're ignorant or illiterate, or that they're off their meds, or whatever else they feel like saying. They're mentally unstable, that they're being rude when they're trying to express their opinions or their emotions. And then they turn around and say they are innocent victims who are being attacked. Some people who I'm looking at want to only talk about what they feel is important, and that was what comes down to the whole premise of this. I've heard over and over again, citizens can still talk about what's on the agenda. I've just seen two citizens try to talk about an agenda item, but because one person on the dais doesn't understand how it applies to that item, they were not allowed to speak. So if they have the three minutes at the end, they can talk about it then. It's not always going to be friendly. I understand. I know. I've got a lot of the unfriendly comments. I've had whole articles and letters to editors and whole citizens petitions that called me out, but you didn't see me having a tantrum and saying those people shouldn't be allowed to be here and shouldn't be allowed to express their opinions, and I'm not even sitting on that dais when it happened. Some people continuously say, "It's just as easy as emailing or calling your council representatives." Where's the responses? I have an email that I've sent to the entire council over a month ago. I received one phone call. I received one email out of seven council members. Some people have sued citizens to prevent free speech, and they lost, even though they lie about it. This is the same thing. This is removing free speech. This is impeding our ability to come up and speak to the council, say what we feel is important to us, and be able to bring our grievances. Grievances are not attacks. Some people that I'm looking at have brought up prior arrests of citizens over freedom of speech, but they forget to mention the charges were dropped, and they still don't look in the mirror. I know that I'm looking at... Sorry. One second. I appreciate your patience. Give me one second. That's how hard these words are to choke out. I apologize. Thank you for your patience. But they still don't stop to look in the mirror. Some of the people that I'm looking at are very adamant about what should and shouldn't be said, because they feel like it's rude. They feel like it's inappropriate. But then they turn around and they do the same thing to the citizens from where you're sitting above all of us. Because your seat is higher than the citizens doesn't make you above the citizens that want to speak to you. Taking away the ability to come up and speak about non-agenda items means the people like Mr. Dunbar can't come up and tell you about what's going on in his business. It means like the gentleman that came up and told you about the $10,000 fine that his father is facing can't come up and do that, because no one's responding to his phone calls or his emails. Everybody wants to see peace in here. They want to see the hostilities end, but I'm going to tell you that peace is never found through war. Don't remove this. Don't take another hostile action towards the council, or towards the citizens, sorry. Don't take another hostile action to us just because you don't like what some people say.
Mr. CJ Grissom, good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Trying to figure out which of our constitutional rights any of you respect. You're taking away these citizen comments because you don't want us talking about conversations at a newspaper. You don't want us holding you accountable for things that you've done outside of these chambers. Are you able to remove citizen comments? Yes. What you're not allowed to do is do so for discriminatory purpose. So even if you do something legal, even if you do something that on its face doesn't appear to be discriminatory, if you do it for a discriminatory purpose, it's illegal. You're not taking away these public comments because you're a tyrant mayor, and people are calling you a tyrant. You're a tyrant city manager Cagle, and you don't want people to tell you that you're a tyrant? I get it. You got weak skins. You're cowards. You can't face the people that you represent. And by getting rid of these citizen comments, you don't have to sit here and listen to that. Like every other city that has no problem listening to citizens coming up there and saying what a bad job their city council's doing, but this city council has a problem with that. For some reason, you just can't stomach the fact that you suck at what you do and that the people don't like it. So instead of just sucking up the five or six people who disagree with you, you're going to shut everyone up just to silence those five or six people. That's a discriminatory purpose. You cannot discriminate based on the content of someone's speech. You can't, Madam Mayor, when somebody's up here during public comments, interrupt them. Read chapter 551 of the Government Code. This is public comment, period, not Debbie Nash King Communist, period. Okay? Mr. Boyd, you're not even supposed to be speaking during public comments. There's case law on this. This is public comments. You are not members of the public. None of you are. You're members of the city council, and I know you know this because I sent you the email with the case law on this issue. I noticed you're not trying to shut me up, but everyone else you were interrupting during their comments. You need to take a real deep look inside, because each and every one of you are either the problem or you're enabling the problem. And the problem is you, Madam Mayor, and your tyrant Cagle there, who think that you can just lord over these people and do whatever you want without having to worry about consequences. The consequences are going to come, and it's going to be in the ballot box. And by the way, I saw your signs out there to open carry. Just want to let you know, I am concealed carrying. People know I'm armed. So what? Doesn't change who I am. Doesn't make me more or less dangerous. Do you feel safer? Does it make you feel better? Because you go and tell people in the media, "You see, we can't come and talk about these things if you get rid of public comments, the kinds of things that you're doing that aren't on the agenda." You want to determine what we care about, not us. And when somebody comes up here and they're speaking about something on the agenda, Madam Mayor, you don't get to tell them how they discuss their beliefs on an agenda item. You don't get to do that. I see y'all looking at the clock. I'll tell you what. I'm going to give you 27 seconds.
Thank you. Cameron Cochran.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Boyd.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for acknowledging me. And I'm going to speak because I'm permitted to. I've got the right to do that. So I... Point of order, I'm speaking.
Mr. Cochran. Mr. Cochran. Mr. Cochran, he does have the opportunity. We're going to take a five-minute break. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think it's important to reiterate that the impressions that are working to be made should be challenged and countered wisely. I will just say, we have been very focused on moving the city forward and maintaining decorum in these meetings. I've heard about threats and racism and etiquette toward citizens. I have not witnessed that from my fellow council members. I'm telling my troop, and so I do not want the perception to be sustained that that is the case. We have new citizens here. We have folks that are watching that heard about this meeting, and I don't believe that impression should be sustained, based on my experience as a council member here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Mayor Pro Tem Cobb.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, constituents. Happy New Year. I see we're starting the New Year off. I don't know what laws that we're reading. However, it means a lot to be respectful at any given time. And why? And when we look at those comments and we look at the liberties that we've had to speak and say the things that we have, yes, we have those liberties. And I can see the television. I can see the council members, and I can see the dais, and everything looked mighty good to me. You've had an opportunity to speak your words time and time, again and again and again, no matter what it has been felt with. I have been in front of ethics committees over and over again. All mine were dismissals. We're doing the right thing. This is the right time to do the right thing. May not be accepting. You may not like it, but that's the way the road is going. When we constantly disrespect and say things, my goodness, when I go into a government building and the president's figures on the wall, we're going to be respectful. And we're going to be respectful for our mayor, of our council members, and of me.
Mayor Pro Tem, you're... Silence her, Mike, if she's not going to be quiet. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Your one minute is up. Madam Secretary, you can start the clock. Four minutes.
You ready? Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I do not pledge allegiance to the mayor of Colleen. I swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States as a military member. No, I do not swear to support and defend the mayor in case her feelings are hurt or her ego is bruised. The mayor and the city council members have taken an oath, just like I did, to accept the duties and responsibilities that are aligned with the positions they are sitting in within the dais. Those same people often forget the oath they took to protect free speech. Strange they want to take it away. That free speech requires them to listen to constituents on agenda items and non-agenda items. Make no doubt about it. Tonight, the council member, yes, the one over there looking down, who has 12 years' experience, boy, he's a senior on this dais, will vote to remove your free speech. As noted, Councilman Segarra, in the meeting recorded November 28, 2023, quote, "Anybody can come and talk to me, but if you disrespect me, I will not communicate with you. That's just how it works," end quote. What he's basically saying is, "If you don't kiss my ass, sorry, I'm not helping you with any problems you might have. I don't care if you're a constituent or not." City council, when you vote later tonight to remove my rights and everyone else's rights of discussion of non-agenda items, remove the opportunity for someone to inform you about the problems they have within this community. I've tried the alternative method. My District III representative does not respond to emails. My District III representative does not respond to emails, nor my phone calls. It goes to voicemail. The alternative process does not work. How else am I supposed to communicate with you, since the local newspaper doesn't print my letters to the editor, only horse's asses up front, letters to the editor?
Point of order. We do not disrespect the citizens in the dais.
Let's move on. The council will certainly move agenda items for discussion. This act, however, will not silence the critics. Without free speech and open discussions of non-agenda items, the council members will take advantage and hide their alleged transgressions. Let's speak about those people the council member in the newspaper called disorderly. They are taxpayers. They are residents of Colleen. They are former military members who served with honor. They are spouses of those military members as well. They put a spotlight on the problems in the areas that may not be known to the general public, because you're going to silence their voice. That's what's going to occur. Why is the city council so eager to shut them up and give them labels as troublemakers? These true American patriots are shining a light on the false testimony that I've heard over the couple of months here in the chambers. They often talk about the misuse of taxpayer funds. You never talk about misuse of taxpayer funds. It's us. We're pointing out your flaws, and you don't like it. Shame on you, city council. Shame on you, members of the public. It doesn't have to take an election year for this council to be misled and tell the voters, "Oh, they're picking on me." These events occurred last year, and the year before, and the year before. In December, the mayor quietly removed her Facebook page. You know, the Facebook page where she says she's the mayor and it's a government record? Yeah, that was illegally done. Efforts by the mayor to direct, yes, I say direct the local newspaper to ridicule people who speak out against her is probably because she has several broken promises and has spouted falsehoods. Going back to the audio recording, the mayor said, "That's my fault. It's a thing African-Americans do. We have a tendency to gravitate towards one another."
Mr. Cochran, that is not on the agenda.
"I will put a shield around all minority women and protect them," end quote. Meanwhile, back in 2023, a high school principal from Colleen Independent School District was removed...
Mr. Cochran, your time is up. Thank you.
...sending a text message, but she stays in power.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. Hold it, Ms. Anka. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to the citizens who are here for a civil meeting, I do apologize that I have to interject here and there. It's one thing to make attacks toward council members, elected officials, where we kind of assume that, but to make them towards our citizens sitting in this chamber online is very disrespectful, and I want to be clear that that will not be tolerated. I do want to apologize that you experienced that, and this is one of the reasons why we need to put some controls on decorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm not an attorney, nor do I pretend to be one, but I do want to read directly from whitehouse.gov regarding free speech and the First Amendment, since we're talking about this here today. And there's a statement here that keeps ringing true as we're hearing all these comments. It says the categories of unprotected speech... It says the categories of unprotected speech include obscenities, defamatory speech, false advertisements, true threats, fighting words, incitement, fraud, and, you know, the list goes on and on. So, again, I want to reiterate that for the public is, look up what free speech means as you're hearing these comments. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
You know what? I lost it a little, but I do want to go back in reference to being reported. And we're going to look at, I was just reported to the Ethics Committee, because we come in and we talk about councilmembers who are uprooted. The only thing I've ever done was been fair. I've been honest. I've been just. And I try to treat every man and woman fairly. And I have answered, I had to go back and look at my email. Mr. Cochran, I have answered your questions when they are related to city business. And so, when we look at the Texas Ethics Committee, I just received a letter December 29th, note of dismissal, SC 323123400. Chair Dr. Cochran, we received your complaint on December 21st, 2023. This complaint does not comply with the legal requirements for a complaint filed with the Texas Ethics Commission.
Mayor Pro Tem. No, Mayor Pro Tem, that is not on the.
I am doing my job.
Your time is up, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I want them to know that we are making, that we are meaning, that we are meaning that.
Turn off her mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Anka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, I do agree with what Mr. Boyd said, that not all councilmembers are unavailable. Most of them are, but some are not. Unfortunately, even some of the ones who are available to talk to and talk about issues, what they do at the end, they turn around and ask the mayor how to respond. So, you know, and the mayor's not available. So, I appreciate the ones who are available, but most of the time, in my experience, they just turn around and ask either Mr. Kegel or the mayor how to respond. So, there's that. The mayor was promised to put it on the agenda to address the five or six individuals. Who are those five or six individuals? Madam Mayor? Mr. Kegel? There are five or six individuals that caused this agenda. Who are they? There are five or six individuals. It's a pretty specific number, so it's not seven or eight, it's not two or three, it's five, five or six. Who are those individuals? If you're trying to stop somebody from holding a dollar, which, you know, some people consider inappropriate, that can happen on agenda items, too. Somebody could hold a dollar bill. I do see you, Madam Mayor. You're doing a good job avoiding me. Who are those five or six people? Us. A few people told me that I'm one of those five or six. Is that true, Madam Mayor? Mr. Kegel? It's okay to talk. I mean, you interrupt people all the time. I'll give you the time.
Ms. Anka, would you please just stick to the non-consent agenda items?
I am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Five or six people. There could be 20 people thinking I'm one of those six people, and they could be wrong. So, it's better to name the names, so that they don't all think, oh, I must be one of those six people. So, this whole meeting is because of those five or six people. You promised, you kept your promise, just like the newspaper said. Five or six people. Give me, give me a few names. Give me two of those six. Three. Anybody else? I know other councilmembers are also worried about those five or six people, so I know that, I'm sure some of you all know who those six people are. The comments that were made by somebody that you considered, you know, or some people considered inappropriate, they were made by somebody walking out the door. So, by removing non-agenda items, that can still happen, unfortunately. So, who are those five or six people? Or just name two. I know you know who they are.
You have a minute and 30 seconds. That's not right. Is that correct? Okay, your time is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome anytime. Do anyone would like to speak before we move forward? Or Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to clarify, if we decide to move this out of, you know, move that comments out of the agenda, so we don't do that, but we're not taking the right of citizens to speak on agenda items. You know, this is something that, I think in the past, we never had it. And I think that we're here to make sure that we vote. You know, that's pretty much what we're here. The citizens vote us to vote. You know, there's nothing can be done without, you know, having a majority. And I think that this deters from the things that the citizens want, you know, the streets, parks, things like that. And in hearing all these people, you know, a lot of these personal attacks, which is fine, if they want to get that out, they want to attack me, anybody else, I can take it, but I don't think a lot of people are here for that. You know, they want to hear, okay, what is the council voting that may affect my tax dollar, may affect, you know, my quality of life? And I think that we've gotten away from that. And I sometimes look at it, maybe that's a positive thing, because we used to spend a lot more time on things that used to affect citizens. And now, you know, we don't hear that. All we hear about is, the mayor's bad, and everybody else is bad, and that's okay. You know, that's an opinion. But as everybody says, that comes out of the ballot box. But we just need to focus back on what the citizens elected us for, is to vote on things that affect your pocketbook, your city, you know, everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one more person, but before I call him, I wanted to make a statement. On non-agenda items. It's a task to be the mayor and be on this council. We get a lot of feedback input. So, I am the mayor. We have four district council representatives, and we have three at-large. And I get a lot of email, as if the district reps or the at-large councilmembers, they are available. And most people do want to come to the mayor. But I will send you back to your district rep. I CC him or her. And if they are not available, I will answer your question for you. And also, if it's an at-large councilmember, they're just as available as I am. And I do take a lot of attacks up here. It's not that I did anything wrong. And I told the council about the non-agenda item when I was attacked. I told the council prior to that attack that closer to election, I will, the non-agenda item will be used as an attack against me. And this was months ago, that get ready, that I will be attacked. And some of the things that you heard that came from non-agenda items that may be on Facebook, maybe in the newspaper, maybe out there anywhere, I just want you to hear from me. It's not true. And the reason I don't speak on non-agenda items is not that I'm weak, that I'm afraid, but that is beneath me. The next person is Ken Wickerson. Sir, you have four minutes. Good evening, sir.
How you doing? Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. I just want to first say thank you for the job that you're doing. Okay? It takes a lot to get up there and do what you do. And I didn't recognize it until, actually, I stepped away, because when you're up there, you're actually watching everything incrementally grow, so it's hard to tell. But when you step away and you actually get out into the community, and you start to see the progress that Colleen is making, I can tell you that I see things every day that I'm like, wow, this is amazing. So, thank you for the job you're doing. Also, I'd like to thank you for, now, for the agenda item part of it, is that the comments, the public comments, or the civic comments, whatever you want to call them, or sticking to what's on the agenda, it's not just, it just doesn't apply to the citizens. It applies to you as well. And that's what we were taught when we first got on council. There's a lot of times you sit up there and you want to say things and you can't, because they're not on the agenda. That's Open Meetings Act, that's things that is passed down and told to us that we can't do it, we can't have a meeting that way. But in just good common sense, you can't do it, because you can't have a meeting. You can't have a business meeting, because that's what this is. You're getting here and you're discussing the business of the city. And if we just have random, everybody gets up here and just complains about the things that's setting them off, you'll never get anything done. And unfortunately, you're not going to get anything done, because right now, when you have the council meetings, as a councilmember alluded to earlier, you get up here and people, they don't know how to act. They weren't raised right. They don't know how to get up here and convey their message without calling names, without making a scene, without turning this into a circus. And as many times as I heard that the city council, oh, is Colleen is a circus, I have to agree, because you've got five clowns out here. And it makes it a circus. And you have to stay above the fray, like the mayor says, and you can't say things, and you have to turn the other cheek, and you have to take this. And I blame, a lot of times, I blame that on the citizens that don't show up and come and speak their mind, because they're out there. They're out here watching it on Spectra. They read about it in the news, and they agree with what you're doing, but they don't have the time to just sit here every Tuesday, come here and just make this, turn this into a circus. And there are some citizens that can. They got the time, and they're just evil enough to do it. They'll tear down, they'll burn the city down, just because they can. Now, I don't get into, you know, whether or not it's because, you know, you look different than other past city councils where they didn't have a problem before. But now, all of a sudden, you look a little different, all of a sudden, you've got a five or six of them that just want to get up here and tear you down. But I just want to share with you that you have the support and the backing of the city that you represent. You don't have to always agree with each other. And that's fine. We know that that doesn't happen. But just stay above the fray, keep stepping, one step at a time, and you're going to keep making the changes that we need in this city. We're growing, we're getting better, and we're getting bigger, and I love what you're doing. So, from me to you, each and every one of you, thank you.
Madam, oh, sorry about that. Councilmember Solomon, I'm sorry, this is not working right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the citizen for its comments. You know, it's not about a few. What we're up here as councilmembers, it's about the entire city. It's about 160,000 people. And just like the citizen said, Mr. Wickerson, there's a lot of people out there looking at us. And I'm talking, referring to citizens. There's other people that are not, not even in this state that watches us. And when I came to serve, I came to serve because it was about, and as I said before, this is a servant job. A servant job. All of us have other things that we do. We do. But we decided that we want to put our hands to the prow and serve, and that's what it's about. And I was always for citizens' comments.
Councilmember Solomon, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I have one more minute from the council?
No, sir. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, thank you all for your statements. I just wanted to say really quick that in the grand tapestry of democracy, we keep hearing that a lot, civil discourse stands as a fundamental thread that weaves together our diverse opinions and values. As legislators, it is our duty to not just represent a particular ideology, constituency, but also to serve as stewards of a collective voice embracing the mosaic and the perspectives within our city. Civil discourse, I've said it before, I will continue to say it again, civil discourse is the cornerstone of a thriving democratic system. It allows for the exchange of ideas and the consideration of diverse viewpoints. By engaging in respectful dialogue, though, we create an environment where differing opinions are not only tolerated but valued as crucial contributors to the democratic process. We can hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. But to Councilmember Alvarez's point, incitement, hate speech, derogatory statements, those are completely unacceptable. It's not by our standards, it's by the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon, to answer your question according to our governing standards, we, yes, sir, we only have one minute to respond. Oh, you're welcome, sir. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please read the discussion items and resolution together,
Discussion Items. DS 24001, Receive Legal Advice Regarding Enforcement of City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum. Resolutions. RS 24001, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Amending the Governing Standards to Remove the Citizen Comments on Non-Agenda Items Section from City Council Agendas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Pursuant to the Texas Opening Act Law Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the ninth day of January 2024 at 5:49 PM under the following Section 55.071, Consultation with Attorney. The city council will consult with the city attorney and seek legal advice regarding enforcement of city council meeting rules of decorum and removal of the city citizen comments on non-agenda item. Agenda Items, DS-24-001, RS-24-001. The council will now go in closed session. The council will now go in closed session. Mayor Protem. Okay, I see you. The council completed its closed meeting on January the 9th, 2024, at 7:02. We will now go back into our regular session, special meeting workshop. With that being said, Councilmember Boitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make some comments, may need an extra minute, so I'll ask for that in advance from the council, that I am likely going to make a motion. On November 28th, this council convened a discussion on the removal of citizens' petitions from the meeting agenda. During that meeting, I stated I didn't feel it was appropriate to remove citizens' petition. As a citizen representative, it remained important that citizens could exercise this opportunity, which guaranteed a method to address their counsel on relevant community-related matters. Ultimately, the council determined to remove the application process and permitted citizens to speak at the end of the meeting on any topic of their choosing. Unfortunately, topics of choice have not been community-related issues or matters, but constant unfound allegations, indirect threats, acts of humiliation, and slander, methodically targeting council members. As local leaders, we understand that we signed up to absorb a lot of attacks that come with politics. But we also signed up to expect decorum in our meetings and civility in our interactions with the public. I did want to note that I had only one citizen contact me to suggest the keeping of non-agenda item comments on our meeting agenda. The majority of comments I did receive are basically frustrations about the unhinged behavior dominating the meetings as of late. My belief is the majority of our citizens are sensible, excuse me, and trust their elected officials to execute the city's business in a professional manner, addressing community issues, and here to move the city forward. If we weren't already doing that, we wouldn't be sitting here. I do think there's three main points for us to remember as a council regarding this topic. One, citizens' voices would not be taken away, as citizens would remain permitted to speak on agenda-related items. The non-agenda item comment period, this is the second point, is complimentary and is not required, and exists at the discretion of the council, as based on our governing standards. And any council member can request to reestablish the non-agenda item comment period in the future, and for future meetings, at any time. As a general reminder to our citizens, you are welcome to share a specific issue with your council member, whom in their discretion can request it be brought forward to the council for discussion and consideration, possible action. This method, I believe, is the most appropriate. But in summary, and to get where I'm going, the city council agenda provides for citizen comments on items established on the meeting agenda at the beginning of each meeting. We all know and understand that. Currently, the meeting agenda also provides for citizen comments relating to non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. The recent incorporation of citizen comments on non-agenda items has proven to present defined challenges to meeting efficiency, chamber decorum, and the procurement of productive outcomes. Furthermore, the city council is prohibited from taking action on any non-agenda item presented at the end of these meetings. I would like to request one more minute.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
While the consideration of an indefinite suspension of this comment period may be a temporary solution, I make a motion to remove the citizen comment on non-agenda-related items from the meeting agenda for the purpose of conducting orderly, efficient meetings.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I second the discussion.
You have something to say? Okay. Please, please keep the noise down. We're conducting our meeting. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So thank you for those statements. And also, it's important to understand that in the legislative arena, we're entrusted with the responsibility of being the voice for all citizens, even those who hold views that are contrary to our own. That means approaching debates and decision-making with an open mind, seeking common ground, and acknowledging the validity of diverse perspectives. It requires us to, excuse me, requires us to rise above partisan divides and prioritize the well-being of the entire community and the entire city of Colleen. Legislating for all means recognizing that our constituents encompass a broad spectrum of beliefs and values. But by fostering an atmosphere of civil discourse, we can bridge ideological gaps and build solutions that resonate with varied needs of our community. In the attempt to have orderly and efficient meetings, I do value civil discourse in the legislative process. It cannot be overstated. It encompasses and guides us through the complexities of government and steering our city towards solutions that are equitable and just and representative of the multitude of the citizens of Colleen.
Thank you. Counsel, tonight's special meeting agenda item was brought to me by Councilmember Boitt, and I thought that he had some concerns about what was going on. And so that is why we had a special meeting about the non-agenda item. With that being said, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Madam Mayor, one thing in the discussion before we make the vote. I just want to make sure I'm clear for everyone here, how I arrived to determining to make a motion. During the past meeting, I watched our citizens sitting in the audience as they witnessed what they did. And I watched the face of some of our residents in disbelief, as if they were saying or suggesting, I can't believe I'm enduring this in a city business meeting. And so from there, it became the point of order. And I thought about this over the Christmas break. Conducting orderly, efficient meetings is our responsibility as council members. And so that's how I arrived to this motion. Thank you.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Council, Mayor Protem? I can't hear you.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I am in favor of the motion.
Motion carries seven to zero. We're going to take a 10-minute break to set up for our next meeting. Thank you all for coming.